Good evening and welcome to the Finance and Operations Personnel Policy Destruction Services Committee Meetings for November the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. There will be also a committee of the whole meeting this evening following the committee meetings. Even though the public is now able to attend in person, we'll continue to stream the meetings live on YouTube. And all the meetings will be recorded for future viewing. We will also continue to zoom the meetings as well going forward to enhance participation in them. You can also view this evening's agendas as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. Also like to remind all the speakers, court team members and board members speak clearly and distinctly into their microphone so that you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on Zoom or YouTube. Where we start with the first committee meeting, I'd like to also remind the public that during each of the committee meetings under the agenda item of questions from the public. If you'd like to ask a question, please identify the specific agenda item that pertains to your question and please limit those questions to those particular items on that agenda this evening. Each speaker will be afforded five minutes per committee meeting to have their questions addressed. Each chairperson will once again review this when they reach that section of the committee agendas. Three or five minute public comments come under the visitor section of the monthly committee of the whole or regular board meeting before any action is taken by the board. Before we start the milk, before we start, like to mention that the Mill Creek Township School District Community lost two of its members recently. Audrey Kellogg and Rob Gustafson. I ask that you keep them and their families in your thoughts and please join the administration and the board for a moment of silence in remembering them. Thank you. First committee meeting is Finance and Operations.
Ms. Senator, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Kobilka.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
First item one point oh two approval of the agenda. I'd like to bring the agenda forward. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Item two point oh one approval of the Finance and Operation Committee Meeting Minutes from October eleventh. Like to bring that forward as a motion.
Second, yeah.
Any discussion of those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have nine action items this evening. So we will get started here. I'll start taking a couple of them, Mr. O'Toole, if you can help me out with a few of them here. First one, three point oh one is our standard dispersments of funds. This is for dispersment of funds by the administration in the month of December and January. All supporting documentation will be provided for the Finance Committee in January. Three. Item three point oh two is twenty-three, twenty-four, Act One Referendum Exception Notice. The board is going to certify that we will not increase any school district taxes for twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a rate that exceeds the index as calculated by the PA Department of Education. The rate for this year is four point nine percent. Item three point oh four is a donation to the Mill Creek Intermediate High School Technology Department. That donation is for a challenge paper drill and paper cutter. Mr. O'Toole, do we have a name for the donor?
I do not. It's a friend of one of our teachers and we didn't receive the actual name.
Well, if we get the name, I would like to recognize and thank that person.
Do you happen to know Dr. Kavanaugh?
Unless it was intended to be anonymous, we will look for a name.
Well, I will.
Item. Three point oh three, I skipped over one.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got it.
Hiding in there. Mr. Tool, would you mind talking about the resolution to amend the school district's four oh three B retirement plan?
Yeah, the IRS had changed the guidelines or the law in a sense for hardship withdrawals for part-time employees. So this is just a revision to our current existing plan with Omni to accommodate for the IRS changes. Those changes are outlined within the document attached.
Three point oh five is a grant from the Northwest PA Chapter of National Tooling and Machining Association, Education Foundation, and the amount of four thousand dollars to purchase a programmable electric vice. Three point oh six is school district student activity account officers for the month of October. We have at McDowell only the class of twenty-four Entrepreneur Club and the Association of Investors. Three point oh seven is the accounts payable report, the October twenty-first payroll, the October twenty-first additional payroll, and the November fourth payroll account. And Mr. O'Toole, if you can correct me. Mr. Kobilka, I do not believe that I saw any payment to Conroy and Friedman.
I don't believe so, but I will confirm that here in a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Item three point oh eight is Stark Tech U and S Service Labor Rates for twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a continuation of our ongoing agreement with US Services for our building automation systems. Mr. Galha, correct me if I'm wrong, we do receive the preferred rate for those services and those services range from a hundred and twenty-three dollars to a hundred and sixty-three an hour depending on which service is provided.
Yes.
And if you can speak to three point oh nine, we have a repeater system.
Yes.
And that is going to be for a contract cost of seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents. If you wouldn't mind sharing the more specifics of the where and why.
So we put repeaters on all of our buildings over the last couple of years. Two buildings were missed, the Education Center and Ridgefield. So this contract puts those repeaters in so that we can use the radio system throughout the entire school. So we'll have two frequencies that you can radio anyone across the entire school.
If I don't have any objections from my colleagues, this is a pretty straightforward agenda. Action items, I'd like to bring them all forward in one block. Items three point oh one through three point oh nine as forms of motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on any of those items from anyone on the committee or the board? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is our action items to take to the board at the end of the month. Item four point oh one, there are no informational items, but I do want to take this time to place a reminder. There will be a special finance and operations meeting this Wednesday, the sixteenth at six thirty to discuss the dead projects for the upcoming construction season. Item five point oh one, questions from the public. Are there any questions online, Mr.?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, President Winchell.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting, Chairperson Dean.
Thank you, President Winchell. Item one point oh one, roll call, Ms. Senator, please.
Yes, Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Lupacek?
Here.
And Ms. McQuinte.
Here.
Thank you. Item one point oh two approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two point oh one Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Like to make a motion that we approve these minutes. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item three point oh one, like to take these three policies in a block. Item three point oh one, six-ten purchases subject to bid slash quotation first read. And this item is updating the amount of the state legislated amount that we have to go out for bid on a particular item, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. And I believe that changes, Mr. O'Toole, does that change every year?
That's correct. It changes by inflation on an annual basis.
That's item three point oh one, three point oh two, policy six-eleven purchases budgeted first reading, and this just up- updates that policy to take out a number and specifically says the state legislated amount for that particular year. So that just cleans up that policy that we don't have to update it every year.
And down below, it allows for, you know, if it's under the twenty-one nine, that's three quotes. If it's above the twenty-one nine, then it's out of bid. So we had to add that language to it bottom.
Understood. Thank you, Senator. Item three point oh three, policy six-thirty debt management and capital funding. This is a new policy for us. This was taken, Mr. Murdock, from the PSBA and we made our adjustments and tailored it to meet what we're doing here as a school district. So three point oh one to three point oh three, I'd like to make a motion that we approve those policies.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item. 3.04 Head Lacrosse Coach Job Description. Like to make a motion that we approve 3.04. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. So, Mr. Murdock, Ms. Lubacek pointed out to me that I think it's item three on the job description, it calls out. Soccer coach instead of a lacrosse coach. So we have to update that. And then in terms of the. Assistant Coach, Junior Varsity in Middle School. Do we leave that in there? The Assistant Coach verbiage? Or should we strike that as well?
I think the question was on middle school because we we're not, we're not, don't have a district middle school lacrosse program, I don't believe.
So this will be more of a generic job description for a head coach, assistant coach, or junior varsity coach. Fair enough. Alright, so we'll make that update and item three. Changed soccer to lacrosse. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 3.05 Personnel Report, November 14th, 2022. I'll go through the personnel report here. Asbury, we have the change of status for an educational assistant. Bell Valley, we have resignation of a special educational assistant. Recommendation for a teacher, multi-language learner, long-term substitute. Special Education Assistant Autistic Support. Title One Educational Assistant. Change of status for a special education assistant autistic support Tracy to Bell Valley. Moving on to Grandview, we have a recommendation for a special education assistant emotional support. Change of status for a special education teacher, learning support, long-term substitute. At Tracy, we have a change of status for an educational assistant. We have another sabbatical grade two teacher. JS Wilson, we have a recommendation for a math teacher, grade seven, long-term substitute. We have a leave of absence of a special ed or a speech slash language pathologist. Walnut Creek, change of status of child development pre-K assistant to child development assistant group supervisor, McDowell to Walnut Creek. We have a change of status of an English teacher, grade eight. Moving on to McDowell Intermediate, we have a recommendation, excuse me, we have a resignation for a special education assistant. We have a recommendation for an educational assistant. Change of status for a special education assistant. McDowell, we have a recommendation for a child development pre-K assistant. Special Education Teacher, LS Milhouse Long-Term Substitute. Change of status, staff nurse. Change of status for an educational assistant guidance to Secretary Fiscal 260 Guidance. McDowell Continued, we have a leave of absence of a special education assistant life skills. At the MEC Mill Creek Education Center, we have a recommendation for an IT technician. We have the 2022-23 Substitute Child Development Assistant Group Supervisors. Child Development Pre-K Assistant. Child Development Group Supervisor, 2022-23 Athletics. Wrestling Varsity Assistant Coach. 2022-23 Athletics Basketball Girls Varsity Assistant Coach. 2022-23 Athletics Basketball Girls JV Assistant. And we have a 2022-23 Department Chair, PA Junior Academy Science. We have a 2022-23 Department Chair, Literacy Magazine. And we have first student activity, we have six monitors and two drivers. And last item on the personnel report, 2022-23 Board Approved Volunteers, we have two. I could make a motion that we move this personnel report forward to the committee of the whole meeting this evening. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. 4.01, we have no informational items this evening. Item 5.01, questions from the public. Senator, do we have anybody online that would ask, like to ask a question?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Item 6.01, German, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn Personnel and Policy Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, President Winchell.
Thank you. Got a schedule, moving on to Instruction and Student Services Committee, Mrs. Winchell.
Wow, those two went fast. Let me just say that in instructions, we have 24 action items and three information items. So sit back and relax. Okay, item 1.01, roll call, Ms. Sitter, please.
Ms. Philbeck.
Here.
Ms. Nussham.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Item 1.02 Approval of the Agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, all motion.
Second.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, item 2.01 Instruction and Student Services Committee Meeting Minutes of October 11th. I'd like to make a motion to accept those minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, let's get on to the 24 action items. Going to break these up into two parts. We have three of these items that we'd like to move to the COW meeting this evening. And so I'd like to start with those, please. Item 3.03 is the Brook Gibbs Program Agreement. It's an agreement for a two-day student assembly. If we could have some background on that assembly, please.
Good evening, everybody. This is a, an assembly that's part of a grant that, some grant funding that. We've, we have here at the district, we need to spend on mental health. And one of the programs being offered is a two-day assembly with Dr. Brooks Gibbs, a school psychol, a social psychologist and award-winning resilience educator who teaches students how to regulate emotions. And solve social problems. So he's going to do some big presentations for our students and parents here.
Thank you, Dr. 910. Another item that's going to the COW this evening is 3.06. These are the 2022-2023 Winter Athletic Schedules. Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
We appreciate that we're considering moving these forward to this evening. The reason they need to go forward this evening is because the seasons will be starting before we have another board meeting. So to make sure the schedules are approved in advance. The schedules have all been attached for you to view and as the tweaks or updates get made, they'll be posted to the website.
Any questions about those schedules? And the third item going to the COW meeting this evening is 3.07. The new unified sport called Unified Bachi.
Okay, so Unified Bachi has been around for a while, but we have not participated in it. We've only done Unified Track. Unified Track has been so successful for us that our coaches have came to us to ask if they could add Unified Bachi, which is a winter sport. So again, that's why that would need to be approved this evening. We already have stuff posted up to try to get student interest and we think we'll have a very high interest level to have Unified Bachi take place. It's been going out across the state for at least the past, I think, three or four years. And I guess it's becoming increasingly popular. We're excited for this opportunity to offer our athletes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move items 3.03, 3.06, and 3.07 forward. To the committee of the whole meeting later this evening. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I had a question for you. The 3.03, the Brooks Gibbs Program. What percentage of that is funded by grants and which students would actually be attending that assembly?
It's the. And the attention of the assemblies are, excuse me, Dr. After you. Well, we're going to do an assembly at each of the three middle schools. We're going to do an assembly for grade nine at MIHS and an assembly for grade 10. So five different student assemblies and that over the course of two days. And then at the end of the first day, there'll be a parent community assembly in the evening. So the parents get to hear the same message.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I have a question about the Unified Bachi. That's the same coaches as Unified Track, is that?
That is correct.
Are there any other questions about those three items? Okay, all those in favor of moving those forward to the COW, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those move forward to the meeting later this evening. Now let's go back and start at the beginning again. Item 3.01 is a contract that. Relates to, go ahead, Dr.
Yes, that's a student late enrollment this school year. His IEP team determined that he needed services at the Barber National Institute. So his IEP will be implemented there. In fact, it's already begun.
Okay, item 3.02 is the Caring Place School Group Contract.
Right, so as I know many of you are aware of the Caring Place and the work that they do around grief and working with children adolescents who are experiencing. Loss of a loved one. And typically students and family members go to the Caring Place to receive those supports and services. We've had a. Unusually large amount of loss this year in the district and we're finding some of our students aren't able to get there for a number of reasons. And the Caring Place is willing to enter into an agreement with us to offer those, some of those grief support groups at school during the school day. For students whose parents give them approval to participate. So we'd like to have that available to our students for, you know, unfortunate times like we're experiencing right now.
Thank you. Item 3.04 is the 2023-2024 School District Calendar.
Good evening, everybody. This is the calendar that was shared as an informational item in October. And we asked that. If there's any questions, just let us know, but it's a combination of a lot of information that Dr. Kavanaugh and I have gathered from a variety of stakeholders. And as we shared last time, we feel we did our absolute best to not meet every need, but an overwhelming majority of the needs that were presented to us.
Thank you. Item 3.05 is the Future of Education Technology Conference. Someone like to speak to that? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
So yeah, this is a Future Education Technology Conference. It's a national conference. It's got multiple tracks for district administration, IT leadership, teachers, coaches, instructional coaches. Similar to PTC, but a lot larger on a national level. We felt it was a good thing to expand to. Especially since PTC doesn't offer some of the tracks for technology. So we're going to have this good opportunity.
And I see that there are six staff members going. Are three of those teachers, I don't recognize some of the notes.
Yes, so we have myself and one of my technicians, we have Krista Copolo, who is our ITPD Coordinator. And then with the help of Mary Ann Ole and Jen Dunn Meyer, we had three recommendations for teachers. One is a fourth grade teacher at Chestnut, seventh grade teacher from Walnut Creek, and an interventionist from Westlake. And we were looking to take advantage of the group discount as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to 3.08 McDowell Baseball Spring Training.
So now that COVID is over, the McDowell baseball team would like to resume their trip down south. The good news with this trip is it is completely booster funded. And it will not cause the team to miss any school because they'll be going over spring break. I know that has come up in the past. The way this one does follow, it does work out well for them. So they're asking to make a trip to St. Petersburg, Florida for spring break to participate in some games down there.
Thank you. 3.09 is the. ROTC Naturalization Ceremony Field Trip Request. We spoke with these people at our last meeting and they were talking about this event.
Yeah, when ROTC was here last week, they mentioned the naturalization ceremony that they'd been invited to participate in. It's a great honor for them to be invited. They were invited to participate on numerous dates. This was well after the field trip calendar had been approved for this school year. So they filled out the request to be able to attend and the dates are listed on there. But starting in January and going all the way into November of next year, they participate in the naturalization ceremony down at the courthouse.
Okay, following that, we have a list of several new courses. Dr. Kavanaugh was kind enough to attach the description and rationale for each of those courses. I don't know how much detail you want to go into in.
The details will be more to answer questions, but I will just kind of comment on a few things. One being, we've challenged the teachers at the high school level to come up with some new and more innovative and interesting electives for the students. And as you can see from the past couple of board meetings, they've wholeheartedly participated in this. So I'd like to thank all of our teachers at the high school level who have spent the time coming up with these new courses. And now, once approved, we'll be spending time helping write the curriculum for these courses. But we're trying to get stuff based on student interest so students don't get in electives that they don't necessarily want to, they just get placed into. And some of the courses that they're offering sound, I mean, very, very engaging. So I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for high school students, once all these courses get added.
Okay, so 3.10 is Advanced Team Sports. 3.11 is Constitutional Law. 3.12 Conservation Science. 3.13 French Culture. 3.14 German Culture. 3.15 Honors Chemistry II. 3.16 Independent Research Project. 3.17 Positive Psychology. 3.18 Short Stories. And 3.19 Spanish Culture. And then the next few items are name changes.
Yeah, the one thing I want to comment with all of the courses that are being added too. We did do our best to make sure that the majority of students would have access to these courses. There are certain ones that are posted on there that are only 11, 12, and that's based on courses that they would need prior to that. Some of them are nine through 12 and some of them are 10 through 12. So we did do our best to make sure that all students or the majority of our students would have access to each of these courses. But there are some a little bit different. So if you read through those and have any questions, please let me know.
3.20 is a name change from Film Appreciation and Analysis to Simply Film Appreciation.
Yeah, that's just an update to the course based on the department request. So that's pretty simplistic, I think.
3.21 is a course name change from Lifetime Fitness or Personal Fitness.
Okay, can I comment on that one real quick? The Lifetime Fitness is a course that we've been offering at the high school level. It's for students in nine to 12. But most cases, it's 11th and 12th graders coming down because it's taught at MIHS to MIHS to take it because juniors and seniors get scheduled first. So we're going to update the course curriculum and change it to personal fitness. And then we'll have sections nine and 10 at MIHS and sections 11 and 12 at the high school following the same curriculum. So all students would have access to this new updated curriculum.
Okay, and 3.22 sounds very exciting. Course name change from Fairy Tales to, from Fairy Tales to. Disney, the happiest elective on earth.
Yes, so the Fairy Tales course is one we approved recently. And as we've asked them to look at all of the course descriptions and names of the courses before we finalize the scheduling guide. Mr. Emanuel and a couple of the teachers that are my chess who are writing this course tried to come up with something they thought was a little bit more engaging to get the level of interest of the students. So that's what they developed. So it's just a name change to a course you guys approved, I think, last month, to be honest with you.
Okay, and 3.23, it's a splitting of a course, if you could explain that to us.
Yes, so we're basically taking what was once basic forensics, which was a semester-long course and splitting into two separate sections. A course with debate and a course based on public speaking. That will allow more students access to the course. Because you would have quarter-long course instead of a semester-long course and they may only have. And they may only have area of interest in one of those two segments. So it does not force them to take the entire course. So it's basically the basic forensics course, which is semester split in two.
Okay, I'm looking at English language.
Oh my, am I reading the wrong one?
Or I have the wrong one. I'm not sure which one it is.
They're both on there. I just don't have that part of the sheet in front of me.
Okay, English.
E L L course?
Yes.
Okay, so we're splitting, our English language learners have an English course with our E L L teacher. And we're splitting the course into two separate segments. We have students who are levels one through level four. So we're going to have a level one and two segment for the more beginners and the newer speakers. And then a level three, for the level three and four, a separate course where it's a little bit more advanced. We are currently, we were teaching them all together and then I realized that wasn't working well. Now that we have a full-time teacher at M I H S, we've split them into two separate sections anyway, following the one course. Now we're going to further expand upon that and separate it into two separate courses.
Okay, thank you. And the final item for action is 3.24, the School Climate Survey.
Yes, thank you. In keeping with the school climates surveys sharing that we've had previously, and certainly this is a strong alignment to the superintendent's goal number three, the safety and well-being of all of our teachers, staff, and students. I know that we've had a number of conversations with the board around ensuring that we have at least two teammate surveys to be administered to the district, one in the fall and one in the spring. We have vetted a number of survey vendors. Certainly nationally, we've casted a very wide net. And we've landed on Panorama. Panorama Education is a nationally recognized organization that has been vetted and referenced by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, as well as Harvard University. They've also been vetted by Castle, and Castle is a company out of Chicago. And they are one of the sort of preeminent S C L providers in the country. We are excited about utilizing Panorama Education for a couple of reasons. One, it will also offer us an opportunity to look at three different big buckets, if you may. A climate survey, a teacher survey, and a parent survey. And while they are sort of pre-existing questions that Panorama will bring to us, I believe that the vendor also offers us a very rich opportunity where we can actually have some input in terms of sessions to be at. Ultimately, now that we are back to some sense of normalcy after our existence during a global pandemic, we want to get a good sense of what our teachers, students, staff, leaders, and parents have been experiencing. And with a strong level of anonymity, they will be able to provide us with a lot of feedback that will drive how we move forward strategically.
And so this is a survey that is administered twice during the school year? It will be soon and then again at the end of the year?
Yeah, and so based on the contract that we will sort of embark upon with the vendor, we will have an opportunity to administer a survey multiple times during the year. But having learned from previous experience, we know that at some point our teacher, staff, and leaders during COVID were survey fatigue. And so I think it's prudent for us to offer two surveys, one in the fall. And we are hoping to offer that sometime in the month of November and certainly to offer a second survey in the spring.
Thank you.
And this is paid for with grant money?
That is correct. Luckily, the P C C D grant that we have received, we are able to roll this in to that grant.
So if we're going to administer this in November, there's two weeks left, one of them being holiday week. Have we selected the questions for the survey yet? Have we worked with them on the survey questions to tailor them to our district?
We've not finalized them, but we are working internally and we will partner with Panorama Organization to get those questions aboard.
Does that mean we really should be bringing it to the COW tonight instead of waiting until November 29?
If it pleases the board, that actually would be excellent for us to have the approval.
I guess this one's for you, Attorney Senate. You said two surveys. I didn't see where it outlined the number of surveys. It clearly denotes that there's a student, teacher, and family survey, but I didn't see a quantity. So that, I think, led into your question of how many surveys, because it's not clearly defined in the contract. Typically with my experience, they usually say two surveys or some quantity.
It identifies three types of survey. It doesn't say how many.
Frequency.
Dr. Roberts' understanding is twice.
That is, we have an opportunity to offer multiple surveys. We've had ongoing conversations with the vendor. And so we know that we will be able to at least administer two surveys.
So, Dr. Roberts, who owns this process, administrator or itself or administrators or who's going to?
I'll own this process and delegate it to the appropriate court team member.
So are you saying that you do want this to move forward to the COW this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
Do you have the ability to reformulate the questions in the second version based off the feedback from the first version? Or is it going to be a recapture the same questions a separate time, period of time away?
Great question. As with any practice in terms of our instructional program or operational program in order for us to sort of get to the place of excellence, we will sort of not remain stagnant or have a myopic approach to how we administer the survey. So the data that we receive, based on the first survey, we'll make adjustments as needed.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we have the ability to alter the question structure.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Yes, we do.
And Dr. Roberts, in terms of it being anonymous, just because you're not putting your name on it, but you say Grand U third grade, you can pare it down to, you know, four teachers. We're not going to go to that level of granularity.
And so in order for us to ensure that there's real anonymity here, the Panorama Education will actually be the ones who will administer, get the data, tabulate the data for us.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move item 3.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. So what will we do to ensure the participation in surveys? I know there is survey fatigue in the past. Typically, the response has been 30 or 40%. So I assume we'd like to be in the high 80s or 90s. So any thoughts, maybe Panorama has, you know, they're used to that, you know, as far as getting high participation rates.
Yeah, so just given what we've gleaned from our teachers, leaders, and staff thus far this year, I have the utmost confidence in our teachers, leaders, and staff that they will be highly engaged to share the kind of feedback that we need in order for us to sort of make solid strategic decisions. Additionally, as with any initiative, I think it's important for us to work collaboratively with our school and building leaders to make sure we're incentivizing our teachers and staff to make sure that we have a strong survey response rate, because this data is mission critical.
Yeah, that's something we've been talking about for a number of years and I'd see it finally coming forward. Really give all of our stakeholders an opportunity in the buildings to really let us know what that client is.
Yes.
Well, and I think Mr. Dean's comment addresses part of the issue with people not responding to surveys. So that if all of that is collected and goes directly to a third party, there's less of a chance of identifying very clearly, even though you don't sign your name, but identifying the building and the grade level, which basically tells you who it is anyway. So it'll go through a third party, which makes that much more anonymous.
And if I may just build very, level of brevity in that, I know that every member of this court team, we truly value the importance of having anonymity on our surveys because, again, historically, there has been somewhat of a culture of retaliation, right? Which impacted the response rates for the surveys that were administered. You know, I've made it lucidly clear and want to certainly reiterate publicly that during my tenure, I will never, ever tolerate retaliation. Members of this court team have the very same understanding. We value every single adult who show up every single day to serve and support students. And so we want to make sure that when we administer a survey, individuals who are respondents to the survey understand that they can be as brutally honest as they need to be. But the good thing is we are not going to touch the survey at all. Panoramic education, Panorama Education will be the ones to look at. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move item 3.2 for the School Climate Survey to the Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion about that survey? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to items 3.01 through 3.23, with the exception of items moved to the COW. Again, those items that were moved to the COW are 3.03, 3.06, 3.07, and 3.24. So I would like to make a motion for all other action items to move forward to the regular meeting at the end of the month. We have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of those items?
I just, just two of them. The Caring Place, I'm so glad we're taking advantage of that. It's a phenomenal organization and we have a lot of grieving in our district and it's provided free of charge as well, correct? So I think that's an awesome thing to take advantage of. Thank you for following up on that. And the calendar, I think it's the best one I've seen for a long time. And hopefully our faculty, staff, and families feel the same way. I think you utilize the feedback that came back and let us know your thoughts. So thank you for doing that.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 4.01. Dr. Nine-Temp, would you give us some information about homelessness?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. So November is Homeless Awareness Month. So I thought I'd bring to the board's attention and to the attention of the public in Mill Creek Township just a snapshot or overview of the services the school district provides for students who are experiencing homelessness. It's a statewide initiative. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we do here in Mill Creek and what our current state of the program looks like. I am identified as the Homeless Liaison for Mill Creek Township School District. And every school district in Pennsylvania has an identified person who does, who serves in this capacity. A brief snapshot of data, where we sit today, we have identified so far this school year 37 students who qualify as homeless attending school in our district. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in just a second. But 28 of those students are doubled up, meaning they're sharing a residence with another family. Four of those students are living in hotels or motels. Three are living in a shelter situation and two are living in a camper situation. 11 of the students are unaccompanied, meaning they don't have a parent or guardian with them where they're living at. And just so you know, generally speaking, an annual number is 37. So we are at our annual number here as we come to the middle point of November. And Thanksgiving time is always a big time for increasing our numbers. So we are definitely, and unfortunately, well ahead of our schedule with families that are just experiencing inordinate challenges within our district. And we also have, the reciprocating part of the homeless program is we reciprocate with other school districts. So if we have students living in our district who are homeless from neighboring school districts, we work with those districts to transport those students back to their home districts and they do the same for us. So it's not uncommon for us to have a student that we're taking to Gerard or that Fairview's bringing to us or Erie City and M T S D or Sharon Transportation. Just a quick overview, a lot of people think of, you know, when they think of homelessness, they think of the things that they've seen, either in person in big cities, sometimes in our own city, or in the media. In Pennsylvania, the funds and guidance are provided through the McKinney-Vento Act originally passed in 1987. It's a federal law. Each district has a liaison and there's directories for that. The average age of a homeless individual in the U.S. is seven years old. And Mill Creek this year, as I looked at that data today, our average age is 11 years old this school year as we sit here right now. Just, I just wanted to share some, some just general information. The Homeless Liaison, my primary role is working with our registrars and our school secretaries and principals on identifying students who qualify as being homeless or meeting the educational definition of homelessness. And then the main thing that we do is we ensure school stability. So while a student is experiencing or a family is experiencing challenges or stability in their housing, our primary role is to make sure they're getting to school. So they get to school, they get free breakfast, free lunch, and we are able to provide them with some general school supplies and school-appropriate clothing. So how do we determine if a student's homeless or not? So one of the factors that is in every consideration is what, did something happen? Was there an event? And there's just listed a bunch of different things. And we've experienced all of those here in our school district. This year, it seems to be there's quite a bit more prevalence of evictions that are happening that are resulting in homeless situations. It just seems to be the trend this year and every year has a little bit different sense of it. The standard under there and the legal definition is, another way we think about it is whether or not the family is in a fixed, regular, or adequate circumstance. Fixed being that are they living in a place that's meant to be lived in by a family? Is it regular? Is it a place that they're allowed to come to? Do they have a key? Do they have a lease? And then is it adequate? Is there enough room for everybody? And that's subjective to a degree. So again, just some examples of substandard housing. So this would be adequacy. And we do have some families living in some situations here that are listed up on that list. I'm not going to read them to you. Obviously, you can figure out what those say. Again, sharing housing of others due to a loss of housing or economic hardship is our most common reason for homelessness. And that creates a doubled up situation where families are living together, not by choice. And that's another element of this discussion. Is the, you know, every now and then there's a family that chooses for what, whatever reason to double up with a frequently a family member to save some money while they're getting into their, their next place. So obviously, that generally is not a homeless situation. Again, is it temporary? We ask a lot of questions as we're working with our families as to what their intention is and if they're trying to get back to the district, especially if they're out of the district. And just so you know, the fam, any family experiencing homelessness, they have the, they, they have the right to choose which school district they go to. So if we have a Mill Creek family who is experiencing homelessness, they had a fire and they're staying at a hotel, you know, in the northeast area. They could go to northeast if they elected to do that. But the intent of the law is to keep the doors open at the homeschool so the students don't have a disruption in their, what they're used to in their school life. And especially if the family is planning on coming back. Automatic, if somebody's living in a hotel or motel, they are considered homeless because obviously that's not a permanent living situation. Trailers, campgrounds, tents. Just some more examples of homelessness. Families living in garages. Obviously cars. We've had, we've had all of these, except this one here we have not had. We do have a homeless dependency shelter in the school district. So we act as the liaison for that facility as well for students from all over the area who are generally placed by the Office of Children and Youth for removal from their home. And so we have students who are living there and they're all on the company. They're not with their parents or guardians. I talked about this a little bit. Students who are not with the parent for really any reason, that's, these are typically students in our district in the high school. And again, I talked to you a little bit about unaccompanied youth that any child who is living without a parent is automatically considered to qualify under McKinney-Vento as unaccompanied. And again, I talked a little bit about, you know, my job here. It's really to make sure kids have an opportunity to stay in school and stay in school with the building that they were in when they experienced the event and to make sure they have a continuity of services here. Our guidance counselors serve as the point person at each of our buildings to touch base with our students. We have a general understanding that they're going to touch base at least once a week with our students experiencing homelessness to see if there's anything that they can do. Our buildings, as you all know, are phenomenal about providing. Our buildings, as you all know, are phenomenal um, about providing uh, packages, uh, food, resources, clothing, resources, gifts at the holidays. Uh, they're really terrific about doing that. And again, um, talking about the same philosophy that it's the, in the best interest of students to stay at their homeschool district. Free meals. And then uh, finally, these are really, it just kind of summarizes what we do here, which is really um, a, a small uh, gesture on the part of uh, the school district for students who are really experiencing some challenges. Um, and I talked, I think I talked about all of those kinds of things. Uh, we, and I, and I'd be, would uh, definitely want to mention, we have generous donations from our PTA's. Uh, M E F donated a thousand dollars from one of their funds at the start of the school year to go to very specific needs that some of our students had. And we are, have a recent partnership with lawyers and kids together, uh, attorneys and kids together, A K T. Um, in Erie County who is uh, stepping up to the plate and, and providing additional resources to our students. So we have an event we're doing with them later on this week. So again, uh, my goal tonight was just to bring some awareness to uh, to the board and to the community about the homeless um, liaison and the services we provide to students who are experiencing homelessness here in the school district. So I thank you for your attention. November is homeless awareness month. November eighteenth is wear red day. So Mr. Leonard, you're a few days early, but you could get that shirt recycled for Thursday. Uh, and it's to provide awareness uh, with regard to homelessness. A lot of people are surprised that I usually re- to review this information with our new teachers. And a lot of people are just surprised to, you know, uh, you know, know that they're, uh, that we have students here, you know, as met, you know, close to forty right now experiencing homelessness.
I think that's absolutely true. I think the perception is out there that Mill Creek is a wealthy district and it's not a problem that we have to deal with. It's, you know, to see the data that you presented uh, is very enlightening. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, item four point zero two is the interventionist presentation.
So uh, last year we had the privilege of adding interventionists at the secondary, both elementary and the secondary level. For those of you who've had the privilege of attending some of our data step back meetings, they've shared a great deal about the um, valuableness that they've brought to all of our schools. We thought that it was important because some of the board gets a step back, some doesn't. For the community members, some people have heard about it at our state of the community or our state of the district events with the community. But we felt it was even more important to bring our interventionists here this evening for you to hear some of the things that go on from uh, six to twelve. So I'm going to bring up uh, Abby Nelson, Megan Haller, Carly Wood, Kelly Bressick and Joe McGorian to share some information with you this evening.
We're just waiting for our PowerPoint.
While they're doing that, if I could just add in that um, I've had the opportunity to attend many of the data step back meetings and every building sings your praises and talks about how important your work is and how much you've done for their buildings. So thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Shirley. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for having us at tonight's board meeting. I am Megan Haller and the academic interventionist at Westlake Middle School and the department chair of the program grades six to twelve. I have the pleasure of introducing tonight Abby Nelson, academic interventionist at J S Wilson, Carly Wood, academic interventionist at Walnut Creek, Kelly Bressick, academic interventionist at M I H S, and Joe McGorian, academic interventionist at McDowell Senior High. We are excited to share with you tonight how beneficial and vital our positions are within our buildings. Our role, along with our expertise and training, has provided a tremendous impact on our students, grades six to twelve over the last year and a half. We have made an immense influence on both our students' achievement and growth in the areas of math and E L A. Tonight, we'd like to give you a quick glimpse into the day to day inner workings of what the interventionists do to help fill those gaps and ensure students do not fall in between the cracks. Our academic interventionists wear many hats. We are so busy every single day trying to meet the needs of all of our students while assisting teachers instructionally, analyzing data, attending screening meetings, administering map assessments, mentoring students to graduate, and the list goes on. The academic interventionists wear many hats or Trojan helmets and M T S D lingo. And we'd like to share in more depth what that looks like.
Uh, good evening. I'd like to talk to you about how we go about identifying some of our students who are in need of these individualized services. So of course, we're using our P S S A data, um, looking at our students who are basic and below, or maybe some of the kids who are right on the cusp. Um, we're looking at our map scores and in particular, students who aren't making the growth projections between testing sessions. Of course, teacher recommendations, grades um, at the high school level, credit deficiencies. And we uh, very often get parent requests also for our services. So once we identify this group, um, we will use the tutorial time for sixth, seventh and eighth grade to pull these groups in to provide individual instruction in uh, math and language arts in a small group setting. And during this time, we're able to kind of focus on some of the, the areas the data is showing us that are of concern. We can target specific anchors and really make sure to reinforce those concepts with those students. Executive functioning is another big part of our time with these students. Really teaching them how to be organized individuals, how to prioritize things. We'll oftentimes do things like locker clean out, backpack clean out, um, helping them to develop a system of good communication between home and us, taking home the right materials, uh, really learning how to be a, a good studier. How do they chunk information so that it's more accessible? How do they use things like flashcards or foldables to, you know, better access the material? So those are some of the ways that we spend our time with those students. And by those numbers individually, last year we serviced seven hundred and twenty students. This year it's already five hundred and twenty eight. But uh, really in our hat or our helmet as a co-teacher, our impact is far greater. We push into the classrooms and in that respect, we can also provide more individualized attention. Small group instruction, one-on-one services, reading tests, um, taking students out of the classroom to give them a more focused environment. And we also do provide um, teachers with data when they're planning their instruction and just showing them some areas that we really need to target so that they can focus to their instruction. And so really in this way, our impact is huge and as far as numbers go. So thank you.
Okay, another Trojan helmet that we wear as academic interventionists is N W E A Map Guru. We are experts in all things map. MAP is new to our district from last January. If you are unfamiliar with what MAP is, MAP Growth is a trusted and innovative assessment for measuring achievement and growth in grades one to ten for both math and reading. It provides teachers with accurate, actionable evidence to help inform instructional strategies regardless of how far students are above or below grade level. It also helps students to set and achieve their goals and parents to monitor academic progress. The interventionists are involved at every level in regards to MAP. We oversee the testing process and create a schedule of support for test days. We determine testing windows. We review and analyze test results. We inform building administration and department chairs of building and grade level trends. We train teachers how to access and analyze reports. We support teachers who are adjusting instructional decisions. We share results with I E P five oh four and M L L case managers. We attend various trainings throughout the school year from N W E A MAP. And we have even trained teachers during the twenty twenty-two summer symposium on sessions entitled MAP one point O and MAP two point O, which drew high attendance from our teachers.
Good evening, everyone. Um, everyone should have a favorite Trojan helmet to wear. And mine happens to be the data analysis team member. As Megan just explained, our N W E A Map Guru helmet has given us the opportunity to work with our teachers to analyze the MAP data reports to inform instructional decisions as well as provide support for students for both remediation and enrichment. Further, our team conducts anchor studies, which allows us to take a deep dive into our standardized testing data for P S S A and Keystone. And we work alongside our building administration to provide our teachers with valuable insights that can guide department and grade level goals. At the high school level, Joe and I support administration and guidance by also tracking credit deficient students and a D N F report. Joe will elaborate on this a bit later in the presentation. And the addition of the Five Lab program in our district has played an integral role in sharing information and identifying trends. Most recently, Mrs. Brigida Anthony, the M I H Justice Assistant Principal and I are working with Five Lab to build a data wall to track student progress longitudinally. This will provide the six through twelve interventionists a centralized location to share all data across grade and building levels. The administration can analyze this report to identify trends and adjust curricular decisions. Our team also tracks the number of students that we service individually in small groups and throughout our intervention programs. The assistance that we provide building administration to track the outcomes of these programs is visible during those data step back meetings that Dr. Kavanaugh mentioned earlier. And we hope that you've been able to see that firsthand during your attendance there. Um, if you have any specific questions related to those numbers, we'd be happy to follow up with you as well. Another Trojan helmet that we wear is a screening team member. The six through twelve interventionists have become vital members of the screening teams at their respective buildings. Each of us is either a SAP certified teacher or in the process of becoming SAP certified. We supply another level of information and support to the team, which ultimately benefits our students. We can share brief notes about student progress. For instance, I'm able to share information with Joe as students move to the high school and he is able to identify and work with those students. A lot of our students for Joe and I may transfer from M I H S to McDowell mid-year based on credits. And we're able to make those connections um, at that time. Um, the screenshots included on this slide demonstrate some notes from the middle school interventionist to me at M I H S there on the left. And also the picture on the right is a brief example that shows how then I start to put my notes in to share with the team at my building, um, what happened. So the highlight is from our interventionist and the color is based on, upon the building they came from. Um, but then also I can keep some notes as we work through those screening meetings. Um, this Trojan helmet really provides us with an opportunity for reflection, evaluation and refinement of the programs and services that our positions offer. Um, thank you very much for having us this evening too. Abby, you're up.
Okay, so as Carly mentioned, many of the skills that we focus on with our students fall under the executive helmet of executive functioning. We know that modeling and practicing routines and organization help prepare students with lifelong skills. As a result, we work with students to create academic success plans, provide them with school supplies if needed. Uh, this helps ensure organization for them. Um, and we also oversee planner checks and locker and binder cleanouts. Um, we provide students with tools such as homework schedules and virtual checklists to keep them on track. Some other areas of focus that we implement are test-taking strategies and study skills. We also monitor grades and progress and communicate with parents often, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Um, communicate with parents often and uh, this, we want to have, you know, parent um, communication home so that these skills can get reinforced. Um, we also try to help keep students engaged in the program by utilizing positive behavior support incentives like ticket incentives in the SWIVIS program. Um, in addition to supporting students and parents, we also help to provide support to uh, teachers and staff. Analysis of N W E A MAP and P S S A data allows us to pull relevant resources for students to help guide instruction. Um, we also collect and share out useful strategies for instruction and behavior management from our colleagues. We are fortunate to attend webinars and trainings on many different topics, which we then share out to appropriate staff. We participate in screening meetings, I E Ps and five oh fours to further support our students as well. Lastly, we promote tutoring and other school, uh, or after school help opportunities to students to provide them with any um, additional level of support if needed.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, one of the most important layers of intervention uh, at the high schools, specifically for eleventh and twelfth graders includes um, the credit recovery program, monitoring and mentoring graduation credits for all of our students. And we do this a couple of different ways. But typically in the beginning of the year, we start off and we formulate a list with administration and guidance of students who may be in need, who are in danger basically of graduating high school. So we work off that list and find out who are candidates right out of the gates for uh, for credit recovery. Um, basically, just so you know a little bit about it, uh, the course has kind of worked like our high school schedule, half credit class. You're allotted about forty-five days to complete the course. A full credit course uh, would be about ninety days. We're utilizing the K O L A cyber program for our in-house students. I'm talking about the in-house kids here, uh, that are credit deficient. Um, if you look up at the numbers, um, actually before we look at the numbers, students can do these classes in my tutorials. I have a tutorial specific to credit recovery. They're also able to log in at home and uh, and work ahead that way as well. So uh, numbers from last year, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, there were twenty-two students that participated in a credit recovery program. They earned a total of twenty-five credits, again, a combination of one credit classes and half credit classes. It was a good uh, stat for you here, sixteen of those students were seniors. And we were able to get fifteen out of those sixteen students to graduate who participated in a, in a credit recovery program. So far this year in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, during the first quarter, we started credit recovery in October, the first week of October. We already have sixteen students who are identified as credit deficient. Twelve of those are seniors and up to date, they've earned five and a half credits. Uh, there are an additional ten students who we have on our radar who are either, were not eligible, meaning they weren't passing all their current courses. Or um, they had a, a strong, uh, heavy course load right now where it wasn't a good idea to tack on some more courses for them at this moment. So there's an additional ten, so that's twenty-six students that we know about that will be um, uh, participate in the credit recovery. Also, beginning in October, we ran a pilot program for Flex Education. So what we did is we looked at all the students who were credit deficient, uh, who were full-time cyber students, not in school, so full-time cyber on their own through the K O L A program. And we identified seven of them who are credit deficient to bring them back into the school and try to reintroduce them to in-person instruction. Uh, those seven students over the course of a little bit more than a month earned five credits. So that program's getting looked at right now and um, I'm sure there'll be some changes and some modifications in the future. But they earned five credits at McDowell. Uh, if we take all that data from above and meet with the, the senior advisors, the senior advisors do everything graduation from the ceremony to the caps and gowns to all the banquets and so on. Um, and we meet with the senior advisors to make sure that they have the most up-to-date list of all students who are now considered seniors, for every senior status and who are eligible for graduation. We don't want any student missing out on any of the activities, running the whole senior year process. So those meetings will pick up more and more as we go through the third and fourth quarter. The above data is all collected and presented to administration, kind of like what my colleague said, so we can meet and discuss, um, you know, the best course of actions for all these students. Everything's very individual. But, you know, we quickly realized, I know they will agree, that intervention is a team sport, for sure. It takes a lot of input from everybody to make sure you have the adequate plans for all of our students. And I think the last line on the, or the first line, excuse me, on the last slide kind of sums it up and puts our job in perspective. We're trying to meet all the needs of all students all the time, for the most part. And, you know, we talk about meeting all the needs of our kids. But most importantly, we look at those kids who do not have case managers. And how can we, you know, meet their needs and not allow them to fall through the cracks? So with that, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your time and all of your attention. If you have any questions, we can take those questions now, or you can always feel free to reach out to any of us. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for everything you do. About 15 or 20 years ago, every, every school in the district had an IST or Interventionalist. And then unfortunately, because of budget cuts, those positions, they decided to take those away. And as a sixth-grade teacher at the time, a transition year, I saw how devastating that was, that the kids get so much support in elementary, and then they go to middle school and there was nothing there to support them. So I'm so thrilled you're back. Actually, people would say to me, why do you want to run for the board? And you are one of the reasons I ran, because it's so important to get those kids who can make it, but they need some extra help. So thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. My question is, if we have 700 students that we interact with, between six through 12, we have what, 2,500, 3,000 students? 2,100? So we're, one in three students is interacting with an Interventionalist.
And that's individually. We also pointed out that we are also co-teaching in the classroom, so that number is even greater. We included that statistic for just individual intervention.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm curious if you're seeing anything yet with the new math curriculum, or if it's still too early in the process to know, you know, what's working well, what, what the challenges are.
I know that the math teachers are very appreciative.
I know that the math teachers, and from my experience, are really appreciative to have our support because we're all in on the math program, too. And I know personally, a lot of the classrooms that I push into at Westlake Middle School are math classrooms, and I am helping with that process. And our, our data drives that, so depending on our need, and most of us do have that need in math. And so we are pushing into those math classrooms and helping them. And it is a very rigorous math program, but it's really good.
Thank you so much for what you do every day, and thank you for coming this evening to share that with us, so we have a better understanding of exactly what it is you do. Thank you.
Thank you, team.
The last information item is item 4.03, the 2223 Assessment Calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
The link should have been included in the agenda, I believe. Dr. Stoops has shared the link with everybody just to show how easy it is, and that's posted the assessment part of the district website for parents to be able to find. So are you guys able to pull that up? Just to show how easy it is, there's been some questions about the assessment and how easy it is to find for the parents, so Dr. Stoops put this link together to share. Okay?
Just while we're using away time, I think it's important for us to note that our commitment to an assessment strategy, and sometime later on this year, we are on the, on Dr. Stoops' leadership collaborating with Dr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Orlando will have a strategic assessment plan in place, right? So having sort of the, this triangle of a robust assessment, strategy assessment plan with solid research-proven curriculum and strong instructional practices will certainly get us to the top of, one, improving teacher practice and increasing academic achievement. So we certainly have a relentless focus on making sure that we have a strong assessment plan in place and making sure that parents also, and other stakeholders, can access that.
I think the schedule is nice for parents. The one suggestion that I would have is that where we cannot use acronyms, so that our parents who aren't versed in what KRT is know what those acronyms mean, and or at least spell them out, so that folks have a better understanding of what we're doing.
Good to know. We will make sure that that takes place.
We'll try. Education is the profession of the most used acronym.
Alphabet soup.
So on the assessment portion of the website, this shows you what all of the parents have access to with just a couple of quick clicks. We want everybody to be able to see that. And it just breaks down the different tests that are being administered and when those assessments are being administered. So they have the windows for everything. So hopefully, come planning purposes for days off or doctor's appointments, they help us out and note include those days. Are there any other questions or suggestions about the assessment calendar?
You know, one of the issues that teachers shared with us at our meet and greets last school year related to the elementary level and the amount of testing, does this assessment plan include a, have we gotten rid of some of that overlap so that there is not so much?
There's been some adjustments. I know one of the things was the FNP that was tapered down quite a bit. And then with the addition of MAP, we had MAP and Freckle benchmarking last year. Freckle benchmarking was eliminated.
Okay, so we added in the MAP. MAP was new.
MAP was last year. But we also had Freckle at the time, so we've eliminated Freckle because of MAP. And the requirements for the FNP were tapered down, so it's not as it's, there's not as many students that have to do the FNP as in the past based on when they achieve a certain independent reading level.
Thank you.
FNP is fun to something else.
Sorry.
That's a great suggestion. That's a very good suggestion. If we could go through and spell out.
Old habit.
We can do that.
All of that is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item 5.01, Questions from the Public. Mrs. Sitter, are there any questions online?
Yes, Mr. Alioda.
Good evening, Mr. Alioda. Is there an agenda item that you have a question about this evening?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Thank you. On that assessment, the climate assessment of the school district, will parents be given a copy of the survey that their children, students, will be preparing?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Alioda. So two responses to your question. One, we intend to also survey parents because we actually value their input and insights, and we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate as well. In terms of the survey questions that students will receive, we have not yet landed on a decision. We will have that conversation with our survey vendor and then arrive at a decision. With regards to whether or not this questions that will be administered to students will be shared with parents.
I'm still wondering, you didn't address my question. The question was, will, after all the adjustments and the tailoring of the questionnaire survey, climate assessment, will the district provide a copy to each parent of what the student will be preparing? In other words, a policy statement from you, Dr. Roberts, or from President Winchell? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alioda. Let me provide clarity. I appreciate it. Once we continue to collaborate with our survey vendor, we will certainly land a decision as to whether or not, or to what extent, we will provide every single parent with the survey questions that would be shared with students.
Okay, thank you. Let me go one step forward. Will the school board directors approve that particular final assessment at a board, at a public board meeting?
I think that's an administrative function to determine those surveys.
Excuse me, Mr. Senate. I didn't hear President Winchell acknowledge you to comment on my question. And I didn't hear Dr. Roberts' response.
Mr. Alioda, we provide the appropriate person to answer the question. I'm the appropriate person to answer that question, and therefore I answer the question. Do you have any other question?
You are the appropriate person as a solicitor to answer my question, which I asked Dr. Roberts relative to the duties and responsibilities of board directors in what goes out and what is approved by the district. Is that correct, Mr. Senate?
I was the appropriate person to answer your prior question. I answered the question. Have any other question?
Could you repeat my question, Mr. Senate?
No, I don't have it written down, Mr. Alioda, so I can't.
Okay, would you, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I answered the question. Thank you very much. Do you have any other question?
You did not answer the question.
Any other question?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alioda.
Mrs. Sitter, are there any other questions online? There are not any questions in person. Okay, thank you so much. Item 6.01 is for adjournment. I would like to thank all of the members of the curriculum team that helped with this committee meeting. I know it went a little longer than the two before it. And the people that presented this evening. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I could make one comment, Ms. Winchell. You are finishing at the time you're supposed to start, so.
Thank you for seeing.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go right, right into the, the whole meeting. Have roll call, Ms. Sitter.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Philback.
Here.
Mr. Kobilka.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. Lupacek.
Here.
Ms. Atlantic.
Here.
Ms. Nusham.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
1.02, Executive Session Announcement. An executive session was held November the 14th, 2022 for the purpose of personnel. 1.03, Approval of the Agenda. I think we need a motion to amend the agenda to add item 3.06, which is the Panorama Client Survey. Have a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to agend, to modify the agenda so that it includes that.
Okay, can I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, motion passes. No approval of the agenda included, 3.06. Have a motion for that.
Motion?
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, that motion passes. 1.04, Moment of Silence. I mentioned that at the kickoff, but let's have another moment of silence for our colleagues and student Audrey Kellogg from Olmecreek, eighth grade. Student and Rob Castin, who's a JS Wilson custodian. Thank you. Thank you. And 1.05. 2.01, Visitors. Are there any visitors? We have none that had, no, no visitor signed up to preregister. Are there any visitors online that would like to speak for three minutes? I see Mr. Alioda. Mr. Alioda, you have three minutes.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, thank you. Well, good evening, Board Administration, students, parents, and taxpayers. We, the people, choose freedom over fear. Parents, do you miss honesty and integrity? Parents, your mission and responsibility is to protect your children, not the school district or any government public official. Let me address the Board of School Directors with the exception of Board Director Kobilka. How many years have you approved taxpayer money for litigation against me in a counterclaim of defamation from November 2017? How much money have you approved for litigation? Have you received a written legal opinion from Solicitor Senate as to the legality of the counterclaim using taxpayer money? Have you and past board directors and the past superintendent, with the legal assistance of Solicitor Senate, presented the legal foundation to the public for the counterclaim of defamation? For the past five years. Have you violated the Sunshine Act for the past five years? If you violated the Public School Code, are you protected against lending taxpayer money legally? Have any of the board directors read the Pennsylvania Surcharge Act? Does the district's liability insurance policy cover violations of law? And will the coverage protect your personal responsibility of the violations of laws? Do you personally have umbrella insurance to cover your actions as a public official? I mentioned fear at the beginning of this presentation. This is my definition of fear. False evidence appearing real. Some of you know my mantra. Follow the money, connect the dots. Thank you for the opportunity to provide my public comments. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board for three minutes? Last, last call. Anyone else like to address the board for three minutes? Okay.
President Winchell, I believe we have a student here. Are you interested in addressing the board? Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
3.01, I'm sorry, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rob.
Thank you, President Winchell. There are five items under the Superintendent's Report.
Six now.
This evening, with a six added with the amendment. If it pleases the board, certainly I would like to bring each of those under a single block. Item number 3.01, New Unified Sport Call, Unified Bachi, 3.02, the 2020 to 2023 Winter Athletic Schedule, 3.03, the Brooks Gips Program Agreement, 3.04, the head lacrosse coaches job description, 3.05, the personal report dated November 14th, 3.06, added the amendment, the approval of the Panorama Education Contract Administer Climate Survey.
Have a motion, 3.01 to 3.06.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, motion passes.
Concludes the Superintendent's Report this evening, President.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. 4.01, Solicitor. Mr. Senate.
No report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 5.01, Old Business. Any old business? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Any new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to Board Remarks, School Board Remarks, any School Board Remarks. Dr. Roberts, any remarks?
Thank you, President Winchell. With a level of brevity this evening, certainly, I would not miss an opportunity to highlight our students and some of the amazing work happening in the district by teachers, staff, and leaders. On last Wednesday, we had an opportunity, certainly, the entire Mill Creek community to witness one of our pride points, and that is the induction of students each year into our National Honor Society. On last Wednesday, we saw 72 students sort of demonstrating that, that they have met all of the requirements of this very highly selective institution or organization. Each year across the country, it is said that only between 30 to 40% of students who actually apply are inducted into the National Honor Society. And the 72 students who were inducted demonstrated that they have met every requirement under the four pillars of scholarship, service, character, scholarship service, character, I'm missing one. One of the parents here who has a National Honor Society member, I'm putting you on the spot, and leadership, and leadership. Thank you. And so we were excited to be part of the program. Additionally, certainly, you, I've shared with the Board previously, but I'm, you know, coming back to our first year of normalcy, we had a really solid celebratory Fall Athletic Calendar. We've seen a number of our athletic programs, both the boys and girls' side, make it to either the 10 championship rounds or even to state and subregional playoffs. And we have one team remaining as a contender, and that is our varsity co-ed football team. They will play in the subregional game at State College on this Friday. I think they are playing against State College High School. That, that's a big game, should be a good one, should be very competitive. Hopefully, they're not playing in any snow. So we're looking to cheer our team on. And they finally certainly want to echo the Board's sentiments to thank our interventionists, and also all of our teachers, teachers, staff, and leaders for their, their work and collaboration, having just completed, finished our first quarter of the school year. While we have a number of years in which we have to grow, there's so much for us to celebrate. Certainly, I'd be remiss if I did not thank the Board for just your continued support and governance as we get through the next three quarters of the school year.
Any other remarks?
Oh, actually, yes. The ceremony on Wednesday was wonderful. Thank you. But I also want to say our, our junior ROTC, they did a wonderful job with their presentation, and it was very impressive to watch. I want to thank them.
Thank you. Congratulations, Janine, Kim, and Jason, for your $70 being added to National Honor Society. Thank you. Any other comments? Hey, adjournment. As a reminder, you can view this evening's agendas as well as several additional items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. As a reminder, we will have a special Finance and Operations Committee meeting this Thursday, this Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, November 16th at 6:30 for construction project bids. And as a reminder to the Board, we have an executive session prior to that starting at 5:00 p.m. in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Kevin, motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.